Yesterday, iconic Portland mayor Bud Clark passed away at the age of 90 years old. I've directed that flags at City Hall be lowered to have staff in his honor. And I will ask my colleagues in the near future for the opportunity to honor Bud with both a proclamation and a day of his own. A two-term mayor, Bud Clark served from 1985 to 1992. On one hand, he was quirky. He famously exposed himself and all of us to art. He biked, he canoed, he wore flip flops. He started Dress As You Please Day. He wore a trademark rosebud in his lapel. The Oregonian described him aptly as "the weird mayor who led Portland to cultivate weirdness." On the other hand, those who knew him knew he had a serious, no-nonsense side and an eye for the practical. He was honest and he was straightforward. He spent years on the business side of the bar he owned in Goose Hollow, and he understood the challenges of owning and operating a small business. He had an eye for budget detail. His daughter carries on that legacy at the Goose Hollow Inn today. He understood that Portland was growing and changing, and he championed the Oregon Convention Center to accommodate the city's emerging status as a destination for both business and pleasure. And he worked with then-police chief and future mayor Tom Potter to expand community policing in Portland. In many ways, Bud's life traces the arc of modern, the modern history of an amazing city, a city he loved so passionately. Yes, he was iconic, but he was also the people's mayor. Everyday Portlanders could see something of themselves in Bud Clark. His love of civic engagement was genuine, and his passion for Portland was contagious. I appreciate all the times he would get together with me and offer advice. Surprisingly, his advice wasn't so much about politics or City Hall, but about life in general, and about Portland, and his passion for the city and the people in it. Pre-COVID, I'd run into Bud at many community events. He was a great mayor who served his beloved community long after his term ended. Bud Clark will be missed, but the mark he left on Portland is indelible, and his legacy will live on for many, many years to come. Thank you, Bud. Commissioner Maps.
Mr. Mayor, colleagues, it's an honor to join you in taking this moment to celebrate the life of a remarkable Portlander, former Portland mayor Bud Clark. John Elwood Bud Clark Jr. was born on December 19th, 1931, and he passed away yesterday, February 1st, 2022, at the age of 90. Bud, as he was known to most of us, was born in Nampa, Idaho, moved to Portland at age six, attended Lincoln High School, served in the Marines, attended Vanport College, Oregon State University, and Reed College. In 1967, Bud opened the Goose Hollow Inn Tavern, and of course, in 1984, Clark ran a dark horse campaign for mayor and won with 54% of the vote. Clark was re-elected to a second term in 1988 and returned to private life in 1992. I've always felt a special connection to Mayor Clark. For example, did you know that Mayor Clark and I are the only two Readies to have ever served on this city council? From time to time, I think about that coincidence, and here is what I have concluded. There are many paths that can lead you to serving on this city council, but I serve on this council today because I followed a path blazed by Bud Clark. Bud Clark is the first Portland mayor I can really remember, and I remember him vividly. Bud was truly unforgettable, one of a kind, a classic Portlander. If I had to describe Mayor Clark to my kids, I'd tell them something like this. Bud Clark was like a salty Santa Claus on summer vacation. He had a white beard, often wore lederhosen, and always had a rose pinned to his lapel. The man boiled over with joy and playfulness. And Bud Clark helped build the city that we inhabit today. He did pioneering work on homeless services. He helped revitalize downtown and the Goose Hollow neighborhood. He promoted community policing. He led the campaign to build the Oregon Convention Center. He championed mass transit and bicycling. And Bud Clark reminded us all to expose ourselves to art. Even though Bud and I look very different, I saw myself in Mayor Clark, and I'm not alone in this. That's why today Bud Clark is remembered as the people's mayor. And that's why today we take a moment to celebrate the life of John Elwood Bud Clark Jr. May he rest in peace. Whoop, whoop. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hardesty.
Mayor, we're gonna have to change the order. I can't keep following Commissioner Maps after he does his historic presentation. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner Maps. We can always count on you to just do the historic research. It must be the professor in you. I wanna talk about being a young organizer, brand-new to Portland, and one of the first elected leaders I met with was Bud Clark in his office when he was Mayor Bud Clark. And I remember the meeting vividly because here I am terrified that I'm meeting with the mayor of this major city, and my job is to go in and ask him for money. And Bud comes in, and he has his biking helmet on, and he has his shorts on. And he comes in, and I'm there with a staff person, and he has a donut. And he sends his staff person into the kitchen to get a knife to divide it into four so before we sit down and start our conversation. So that was my introduction to Mayor Bud Clark, right? And I'm sitting there like, whoa, right? And constantly, I would run into him as he was riding his bike around town. And he never forgot anyone that he interacted with, and he would stop me down by Lloyd Center, and we would have these long philosophical conversations. When people say Bud Clark was one of the kind, he really was. He was a person that listened deeply. Even if he didn't understand what it was you were talking about, he would listen and ask questions to learn. And he was always the same person, whether you met him inside City Hall or whether you met him riding his bicycle around town. He was a quirky individual, and he will be fondly remembered as someone who put his heart and soul into being mayor of this great city and someone that made everybody, even a kid who had just showed up in town, and her first job was to go in and ask him for money and made her feel like, wow, we're gonna be good friends. And we were. I'm gonna miss Bud Clark, and thank you, Mayor, for taking the time to honor what are the good ones.
Thank you, Commissioner Hardesty. And colleagues, I just wanted to leave this space this morning so we could, we can honor former Mayor Clark. Of course, we'll have a formal proclamation on a later date. Commissioner Ryan, then Commissioner Rubio.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'm so glad we're beginning the meeting today with this pre-Gavel. Rest in peace, Mayor Clark. You served this beautiful city of roses with compassion and love. Your fearless leadership inspired us to expose ourselves not only to art, but to innovation and change. I met Mayor Clark several times. Like many, I met him at the Goose Hollow Inn, and he was always the same. He was calm, approachable, and sincere. Then when I ran for the school board in 2005, he invited me into his home. Actually, it was his kitchen. And at least seven people entered in the hour that we were there, and it would be like, hello, Grandpa, hello, Bud, just hello. Some didn't even say anything. No one questioned why this stranger was in the kitchen talking about children, youth, and schools. It just seemed natural for someone to be in the kitchen, Bud's kitchen. And Bud's world, and all of us were just better off being inside of it. So it really made an impact on me and how he carried himself when I would see him in public, when I saw him at Goose Hollow, and then in his kitchen. He was basically the same. He endorsed me, and he reached out a couple of times while serving. He was always very brief. He was always really calm, but boy, he was clear. It's because he cared. You know, he lived by his quote, "Good citizens are the riches of our city." And Bud Clark was an inspiration to Portlanders. And yes, he also exemplified our city's motto, "To Keep Portland Weird." We will truly miss you, Mayor Clark. May passion and joy you brought to our city guide us today and always. And I do think the cheer for this city, no matter what we're rooting for, will always be whoop, whoop.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Rubio.
Thank you, Mayor. I only had the opportunity to meet him once as a young staffer when I worked for Mayor Tom Potter. As they frequently, they were good friends, and they used to talk a lot, a lot during his term. So I never had the chance to know him like many of you, my colleagues. But I joined my colleagues in appreciating the unique and endearing leadership of this man. And also appreciate that Bud Clark was a person of great substance whose work remained so timely. He had a compassionate approach to houselessness, and together with Tom Potter was at the forefront of community policing. He embraced bikeability and public transit and multimodal transit options, which again were at the forefront of things that we're trying to and attempting to establish now, and they're becoming a part of our community. And as Portland's Art Commissioner, I'm particularly grateful for his advocacy in public art, which is a cornerstone of our city, and it's also changed the DNA of our city to embrace and own art in a way that's become part of our cultural fabric here in Portland. So today, I'm sad for our collective loss and also incredibly grateful for Bud Clark's legacy and all he did for Portland.
Thank you, Commissioner Rubio, and that's a great note to end it on, which is gratitude. Thank you. Thank you, colleagues. And with that, colleagues, this is the February 2nd, 2022 morning session of the Portland City Council. Kealan, please call the roll.
Rubio.
Ryan.
Here.
Hardesty.
Maps.
Wheeler.
Here. Under Portland city code and state law, the city council is holding this meeting electronically. All members of the council are attending remotely by video and teleconference, and the city's made several avenues available to the public to listen to the audio broadcast of this meeting. The meeting is available to the public on the city's YouTube channel, EGov-PDX, www-portlandoregon.gov/video, and Channel 30. The public may provide a written testimony to the council through the council clerk. The email is cctestimony@portlandoregon.gov. The council is taking these steps as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and the need to limit in-person contact, as well as to promote physical distancing. The pandemic is an emergency that threatens the public health, welfare, and safety, which requires us to meet remotely by electronic communications. As always, thank you, everyone, for your patience, your understanding, your flexibilities. We managed to be challenging circumstances to conduct the city's business. And now we're gonna hear from legal counsel on the rules of order and decorum. Good morning, Emma.
Good morning, Mayor. To participate in council meetings, you may sign up in advance with the council clerk's office for communication to briefly speak about any subject. You may also sign up for public testimony and resolutions, reports, or the first readings of ordinances. The published council agenda at www portland.gov/council/agenda contains information about how and when you may sign up for testimony while the city council is holding electronic meetings. Your testimony should address the matter being considered at the time. When testifying, please state your name for the record. Your address is not necessary. Please disclose if you are a lobbyist. If you are representing an organization, please identify it. The presiding officer determines the length of testimony. Individuals generally have three minutes to testify unless otherwise stated. When your time is up, the presiding officer will ask you to conclude. Disruptive conduct such as shouting, refusing to conclude your testimony when your time is up, or interrupting others' testimony or council deliberations will not be allowed. If there are disruptions, a warning will be given that further disruption may result in the person being placed on hold or ejected from the remainder of the electronic meeting. Please be aware that all council meetings are recorded.
Thank you very much. First up is Communications, first individual, please, Kealan, item number 60.
Request of Adriana Vasandre to address council regarding a hearing on instituting foie gras ban.
Hi. Before I start my testimony, I just wanna acknowledge your recognizing of Bud Clark. I also first, he was the first mayor that I knew of when I was a Readie back, back when he was mayor. And most recently, met him when he came and sat, he was sitting next to me in front of City Hall very recently to voice his strong support for the Portland Clean Energy Fund. What a wonderful man, and I just wanna recognize him first too. So honorable city commissioners Rubio, Maps, Hardesty, Wheeler, Ryan. My name is Dr. Adriana Vasandre. I'm a resident of Portland for 30 years, and I'm here to urge you to support a proposed ordinance banning the sale of foie gras in the city of Portland. I wanna begin my testimony just by acknowledging all the enormously important and incredibly complex issues facing our city, including access to housing, mental health services, climate resilience, and racial and economic justice. I'm grateful for your work in prioritizing these critical issues. Some of you know me in my capacity as a longtime advocate for climate justice, including to help pass the frontline-led Portland Clean Energy Fund. Over the past decade in the climate movement, there's been a growing awakening to the fact that we're all interconnected and that our resistance struggles against our deepest societal ills share the same root causes. From mass incarceration, growing inequality, the erosion of our democracy and permanent war, to mass pollution, animal cruelty, global warming, and the mass extinction of life on our only planet. They stem from a culture of materialism, greed, a culture steeped in supremacy, violence, and exploitation. To provide but one example of the connection between our exploitation of animals and climate injustice, animal agriculture, which in this country is mostly carried out in horrific confined animal feedlot operations, also known as factory farms, globally account for over a third of global methane emissions annually, methane being one of the most potent greenhouse gases and is also the leading cause of desertification, habitat destruction, wildlife extinction, and ocean dead zones, all of which make animal agriculture a leading contributor to the climate crisis, a crisis that is impacting the global South, as well as those in our own communities' most vulnerable populations, first and worst. We have a very long way to go to addressing these larger issues, but I mention this in order to provide the framework for why I'm taking the time to call for a ban on foie gras. Foie gras is a so-called food product produced almost exclusively to please the palate of a wealthy few at the cost of the worst forms of cruelty and exploitation imaginable. Foie gras is made from the liver of geese and ducks, incredible creatures who experience maternal love and bonding just as we do, who scream out in pain when they are hurt just as we do. To produce foie gras, these sentient beings are kept in factory farms known for their abhorrent conditions and repeatedly force-fed, using foot-long pipes to shove food down their throats as they panic and squirm in agony, often perforating and hemorrhaging blood into their throats and ultimately ballooning their livers to 10 times their normal size before slaughtering them if they don't die in the process first. As Mahatma Gandhi stated, "The greatness of a nation and its moral progress can be judged by the way its animals are treated." Although banning foie gras is only one tiny step toward moral progress we urgently need, by instituting this ban, it would not only have an immediate impact on the lives of these tortured animals, it would also be making a powerful statement that our city stands against a culture of the worst forms of violence, exploitation, and material excess. This ban is one of the very lowest of the low-hanging fruit that you can institute easily here and now. This is evidenced by the fact that, one, and I'm almost done, it will be negligible cost to the city, and only few Portland restaurants continue to carry foie gras, and the enforcement would be entirely complaint-driven. Two, there's increasing public support for basic animal welfare in the United States with polling indicating that nearly 40% of Democratic voters believe that animals deserve the same rights as people to be free of harm and exploitation, and a growing majority of all Americans are either somewhat or very concerned with the way livestock and other animals are being raised for food and treated, are treated, and believe that they deserve some protection. For this reason, there's little doubt that the large majority of Portlanders, if they were even marginally aware of the type of cruelty inherent in this industry, would be supportive of such a ban. And three, this is not setting a new precedent or uncharted territory. The list of places that have successfully instituted a ban on foie gras continue to grow, including numerous nations across Europe and South America, as well as the entire state of California. And more recently, New York City Council passed a ban in New York City where over 1,000 high-end restaurants had previously carried it. There's been little to no public outcry on these bans other than from a handful of businesses profiting off of this extreme cruel industry. So let us join these nations, states, and cities to continue to work on forging a new path, one based on compassion and justice. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next individual, please, item 61.
Request of Alex Nathan Khan to address council regarding fur sale and foie gras ban.
And just a reminder, folks, there is a timer that is now visible, three minutes each, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and hello, all the city council members. Thank you for having me today. My name is Alex Khan, and I'm a Portland resident here also to support, to voice my support for the fur sale and foie gras bans. I'm involved with several local activist groups that support animal-related campaigns such as these. But today, I'm here as an individual because I'd like to speak with you in a way that diverges slightly from that typical talking plans other activists have. I'm delighted to be here because I suspect that you, as elected officials, probably share an interest in political philosophy like myself, which I've found that I have an excess of that of many of the activists I work with. I've heard that some people say that animals cannot vote so that our political system will never accommodate them. But I find, contrarily, that political consideration for animals is almost directly aligned with some of our most basic political principles, most notably those set out by John Rawls in his Theory of Justice. I suspect that you've all heard of the original position where we imagine ourselves in a disembodied state about to come into society. And from behind the veil of ignorance in this original position, when we know, when we do not know what place in society we will come to occupy, we then try and create a system that we find, we'll find fair, even if we find ourselves at the bottom of the society that is then erected. And I suppose in this regard, I would remind us that none of us chose to be born as Portlanders or as humans, for example, and we could have just as easily been born as ducks or foxes or mink that are born into these, these factory farms and that have pipes shoved down their throats in order to expand their livers and make them blow up so that the wealthier residents of the city can eat them. So in other cities, many of these practices have already been banned. They, in some ways, Portland lags behind other American cities and other countries. And I, I would think that if we would consider the, the fact that we could have just as easily been born in the position as these others, that we would probably reconsider making this even a legal practice to begin with. And I would, I guess, close by just reading you a succinct definition of how foie gras is made from the book World Peace Diet, though the last person who spoke probably had a more descriptive account than me. "The bird's liver is forcibly enlarged by inserting metal pipe down the throat and pressure driving much larger quantities of corn into his or her stomach than it can manage. This often causes blowout or rupture of the animal's internal organs. When the duck or goose's liver is inflated to 10 times its natural size, he or she is killed so the diseased liver can be eaten." If we take John Rawls' original position behind the veil of ignorance and imagine ourselves being born into society into this position, I think that we will find it some, kinda obvious that we would want this to be banned. So that's all for me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for being here today. Next individual, please, Kealan, item 62.
Request of Alexander Hayden Stein to address council regarding vaccine passport approval. Alexander, are you able to unmute?
Yes, can you see me? Yo, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm clear.
Okay. Yo, I just wanna say, hey, I'm a member of Antifa, and listen, I was in Texas. I had a wife, she worked at a bank, you know, she worked there for 11 years, and I had two kids. And she got all radicalized and became a Trump supporter. So I took the dog, I took the car, and I drove straight to Los Angeles. And I'll be honest with you, like, LA was terrible. It was a nightmare. And then I met some guys, we rode some trains, and we went up to Portland. And I have to tell you guys, this is the best place, the cleanest methamphetamines that I've ever done. But the problem is, is a lot of these guys, all these dope users out there, you know, they're, a lot of them aren't vaccinated. And that's the thing, they got all these needles. I don't wanna catch COVID, you know what I mean? Like, I'm triple vaccinated, and I think everything, I mean, I'm telling you, this El Camino, I, like, I've been parked on this street for three weeks. Nobody has said anything at all. It is so chill. Dude, I'm just, you can smoke all day in the purest Molly I've ever seen. Like, you can stay up all night, and it's chill in Portland. In Texas, if you stay up all night, it's terrible. And like, man, what happened at the Federal Building? It was like, it was sweet that y'all were so chill about it because a lot of my boys were the ones starting those fires. And like, I know some family friends that went down on January 6th to Washington DC, and now they're in jail forever. Like, they're gonna be in jail forever. So that's so tight that you were able to hook us up, Mayor Wheeler, and not mess us up like those loser Trump supporters. They're like, so Portland is chill. So guys, if y'all want some clean dope, the Fentanyl is clean, the Molly is clean, the PCP, the GHB. Oh my, the cleanest GHB I've ever seen. Oh my God, me and my boy Faze, we were tripped out for four hours, dude. We were at the McDonald's. Dude, I had six McChickens, dude. I don't even eat meat, man. It was sick. Portland is like, if you're chill and you like to smoke and you like, like, and you like old art movies, dude, you can smoke all day, watch old movies. They'll let you take your dog in the theater. They let you take your dog in the theater. They don't do any of that crap in Texas. In Texas, they got all these rules, they got all these cops, they pull you over. Dude, Portland is so chill. So Mayor Wheeler, you're the number-one chillest mayor ever, dude. So I just wanna encourage everybody out there. If you got a family member that is like on Trump's crap or something like that, go to Portland, take the train.
But over time, so we can cut him off now.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So I'll take that in the spirit which it was offered, which is complete sarcasm. Next individual, please, item number 63.
Request of Alexandra B. Etheridge to address council regarding experiences with targeted crime and personal safety working downtown.
Good morning, Alexandra. Welcome.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. I'm Alexandra Etheridge, new Portland resident and associate director for hydrologic studies in the US Geological Survey Oregon Water Science Center. I'm speaking today in my capacity as a citizen of Portland who works in downtown. As a relative newcomer to downtown workplace in Portland, I recall visiting here for various meetings when I worked in other states, and I can clearly see that the quality of downtown work experience has deteriorated. Having recently stepped into a leadership role in our workplace, I can also plainly see evidence of long-term exposure to perceived risk to physical safety for our employees as we approach our workplace. They are numbness, some keep, just keep their nose down and keep, to keep getting through the experience day by day, disassociation, willingly disconnecting from various incidents to carry on and continue our work, memory lapses, forgetting which incident occurred and when, not remembering which preventative measure we have tried before or are exploring again, and despair, simply not feeling safe or excited to show up for work even when the work we do is so rewarding. Our workplace has suffered repeated impacts for perceived targeted crime on our work trucks and on our building originating from nearby encampments. Many of us are spending lots of time working on Band-Aid measures such as creating emergency contact cards, creating personal safety plan templates and documents, or attending trainings with security professionals. Meanwhile, employees continue to feel that nothing will prevent... Meanwhile, employees continue to feel that nothing will prevent an inevitable personal injury because of continued exposure to targeted crime, currently most obviously accounted for in property crimes. Equally egregious are random and unpredictable events such as an explosion that blew out office windows, arson, trespassing, and an unplanned presence near an uncontrolled use of a firearm in an encampment adjacent to our office. These pose imminent danger with the risk of severe injury or death for our employees, and their concerns are reasonable. In addition, we spend time to documenting incidents with federal workplace systems, city systems, and a campus system while risking victim blaming if something awful occurred and we did not adequately or fully document prior offenses. As a relatively new employee, learning about and leading teams who conduct place-based, community-supported watershed science in the city of Portland and the state of Oregon, I am saddened that our workload has increased to deal with our workplace realities. I'm saddened to see some of our lowest-paid employees make some of the biggest personal sacrifices to uphold our mission in this setting. I am frustrated that I do not have the expertise or jurisdiction to change our course. These issues are challenging, and I volunteered to be heard today only to build awareness of the impact situation downtown is having on our workplace. As a newcomer to the city and a reader of the local papers, I can see that there is a disruption taking place in systems of power and governance. Disruption can lead to great improvements or further demise. And my hope is that voted upon, planned and funded improvements are not further delayed as ongoing delays will result in further demise. Thank you.
Thank you. And Alexandra, before you disappear here, I think some folks may want to comment. Commissioner Maps.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I want to, um, engage in, in, uh, this topic, but I think we have another, um, um, a person who's going to share a similar perspective. So I'll go after Dar, if Dar is with us today.
Very good. Uh, thank you. Alexandra, can you stick around for a minute?
Yep, I'll be here.
Great. Thank you for being here. Uh, next individual, please.
Hi, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Commissioner Hirsty, sorry.
Um, um, I do want to ha- uh, uh, respond to, um, Alexandra. Um, Alexandra, thank you first of all for being here today. Um, it is clear in your voice that you are passionate and care deeply, and you're really concerned about just the day-to-day operation. As someone who is a public transit user, I can tell you that I absolutely feel the pain that you are expressing this morning. Um, and there is not a corner of the city that is not suffering that same kind of pain. So I, I just want to acknowledge that, um, I, I, I hear your voice as a concerned community member, as someone who wants to continue to do good work and want someone who is concerned about the people you work with every day. And I, and I just want you to know, I, 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 I see you and I hear you and I feel that pain. Um, uh, there, we have a lot of issues, but thank you for being a newcomer. And thank you for putting your shoulder in to say, you know, uh, we, we got to do some things. And a lot of us have to do a lot of things because if it was a one-size-fits-all solution, we'd have solved our housing crisis three mayors ago when we first declared a housing crisis. So, um, I, thank you, thank you. Uh, I, I go all the way around and say, thank you for being here. Thank you for speaking from your heart. Um, and, um, I just say, let's lean in together. And, uh, um, because Portland is going to come back better than ever, and it's going to be more equitable, and it's going to be more fair. And you're right, we, when you're changing systems, there's a lot of storming that happens, but we have to keep our eye on the prize. Where are we headed? And who are we going to be when we start rebuilding from this pandemic? So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Item sixty-four. Next individual, please. Kealan.
Request of Dar Crammond to address council regarding working downtown and experiencing targeted crime and personal safety concerns.
Good morning, Dar. Are you unmuted?
Yes, now I am. Thank you very much.
Good morning.
Good morning. I am James Darwin Crammond, a Portland resident and director of the US Geological Survey Oregon Water Science Center. I speak to you today in my capacity as a citizen working in downtown Portland. As director of a federal workplace, I'm responsible for the safety and health of more than one hundred and ten people, eighty of whom work in Portland at our main office on the south end of the Portland State University campus. Half of those employees have field responsibilities that require them to arrive early, pick up work vehicles, load up and prepare, and move out to the far-flung rivers, wells and lakes across the state. Those technicians are independent, they're skilled, they're motivated, and they're the backbone of our data collection function. The other half of our staff are scientists, managers and administrative employees who work from the Portland office. Those employees are professional, accomplished, and are critical to our mission. All of these people are Portland citizens or Portland-adjacent citizens. Our location has steadily grown more dangerous, dirty and dispiriting. Four years ago, we had an unhoused person living across the street. He was loud, unpredictable, slightly scary. He was, however, recognizably a human being and generally peaceful. In that same time, we had some break-ins of vehicles and some vandalism. These were unfortunate, and we passed them off as sad realities of living in an urban center. In the last two years, those sad realities have grown into intolerable conditions. We've had two burglaries at our offices. We've had at least two sets of camps at our office and at our secure parking facility. When it lasts there, cleared out, the denizens immediately return and resettle. Last year, propane heater explosion on our sidewalk blew out windows in the office. A person was seen shooting into traffic on I-205. Drug dealing is rife, and we often have to step over discarded needles and sleeping forms in our doorways to get to work. Employees have had many dangerous and threatening encounters with unhinged residents of these camps. Trash and human waste are everywhere. The effect on my coworkers is direct and tangible. Reasonably enough, employees do not want to come to work in this environment. Beyond that, many are showing signs of trauma-related stress, productivity and morale are suffering. We've had to initiate a buddy system just to be outdoors with protocols for constant supervisor contact, safety vests, lights, personal alarms, safety trainings. We have spent over three hundred thousand dollars on securing our work vehicles with only mixed results. People are leaving our workplace because of the risks, moving on to other jobs and locations. We are facing an existential threat as a downtown business. We are forced to begin a move to a safer location outside of Portland. The city's riches will be diminished with the loss of these good citizens. I don't blame the campers. There are a few other options for housing. There's a plague of meth and opiates and a world that offers them no hope and little assistance. In my view, where the blame squarely lies is with the city of Portland. Please continue to follow through on funded initiatives, fulfill the many promises made to the citizens, and give these human beings back their dignity. As a byproduct, our safety and our work lives will improve, and we may even find it possible to recapture what had been a great downtown work experience. Thank you for this opportunity to address the council.
Thank you. Commissioner Maps.
Um, I just wanted to take a moment to thank Alexandra and Dar for coming forward to share the experience of our federal employees who work downtown. Um, I wanted to pause here and reassure you that, um, your concerns have been heard by council, and I think that we have some, um, I think we're making some progress, and I wanted to share some background on the progress that we're making. Um, a couple of months ago, as you may or may not know, uh, Congress, Congressman Blumenhauer reached out to my office and the mayor's office and asked us to personally meet with the heads of federal agencies located downtown, um, and we did that. And, um, at that meeting, uh, we heard from, uh, federal employees who had experiences with assault, uh, verbal harassment, um, and the kind of fear and trauma that we've heard about today. Um, I want you to know that that meeting, um, has provoked change. In the wake of that initial meeting, my staff, working with the mayor's office, uh, pulled together a follow-up session which included representatives from Central Precinct, the Office of Civic Life, the County Chair's Office, the District Attorney's Office, and Downtown Clean and Safe. That group identified a set of, um, steps we can take, uh, which will make, uh, um, federal employees downtown safer, and I think everyone who frequents, uh, um, downtown safer. Uh, generally, the notion here includes items like explaining more clearly how your folks can engage with our public safety community and what to expect once you do, uh, 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 engage with the public safety c- community. I believe there are other important reforms that we can bring forward in the coming weeks and months, too. Um, I'm deeply committed to, uh, um, making that change. Uh, we need you, uh, um, downtown. The work you do is vital to, um, our city, um, our state, and indeed our country. Uh, I can pledge to you that I will, uh, be a partner to you as we seek solutions to our, um, livability and public safety challenges, and I ask you to please, please stick with Portland. If we work together, I believe that we can sort this out. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to Alexandra and Dar for coming forward today and sharing their experience.
Thank you, Commissioner Maps. Commissioner Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, uh, Dar, and thank you Alexandra for being here this morning. I, I really just wanted to take a moment to say that your testimony was impactful. I have conversations daily that sound so much like yours, and most of them are in the central part of town, whether it's, um, the, the core of downtown into Old Town and over in the central east side. And so this is, this is important, um, for us to take time at a city council meeting to let your voices really be heard. So I just wanted to take a moment to do just that. Uh, I, my office is going to reach out to both of you. I want to, um, have some dialogue about the approaches that we're taking, uh, with really addressing the houses crisis. I think the theory of change, if you will, that we've been adopting for over a decade isn't working, and it's time to, uh, really sink in our teeth into, um, much more of a solution-based strategy. And I would like to, um, vet that with you, as I am with the communities right now, um, throughout the city, as we're looking to really provide direct services and really build resilience, um, um, so that we can move away from merely, um, let's just say, harm reduction and enabling that we currently do. So, um, I'm really grateful that you were here this morning. That took a lot of time for you to, uh, sign up and be here, so thank you for serving our city. We just heard about the great Mayor Clark and his comment, his big quote was always, "Good citizens are the riches of the city." And daily I hear about people who live here that pay their taxes, that love the city, that are giving up on it. And if we continue to see that, uh, go away, then it's going to be pretty hard to get it back. So anyway, I heard you, and all of us are united to, to do. That's right. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Hirsty.
Um, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, colleagues. Um, I am, I've also been in conversations with Commissioner Blumenau about this issue. And again, it is not a easy solution, and businesses all over the city are having these same kind of experiences. And I'm really hoping the federal government will be a strong partner in helping us find humane solutions, um, as we continue to all, uh, uh, try different avenues, uh, to address the crises on our street. Um, we cannot forget that in March of 2020, many people lost everything, including their two and three fifteen-dollar-an-hour jobs. And those people aren't even close to economic recovery. Uh, and we have to do it all. We can't just, uh, just, uh, paint everyone on the street with one brush. We have to be very intentional, and we have to make sure that when people are harmed, that we have a police force that will investigate, uh, those issues and prosecute people for criminal behavior. Uh, there's no one on this council that does not want people who are assaulting people, abusing people prosecuted. And so, again, uh, it, if there was an easier solution, three mayors ago, we'd have solved this. Clearly, there is not an easy solution, and I hope we will take a much more, um, inclusive approach and make sure that we're hearing all voices and not just an echo chamber of a one-size-fits-all solution.
Thank you. And, uh, Commissioner, I, I'd like to chime in on this as well. Th- this is obviously the most important issue facing our community, Barna. It is the top priority for the Portland City Council. Um, we are completely aware of the trauma that this is causing the community economically, socially. In term, i- it's not just businesses. Neighborhoods are severely impacted by the manifestations of rapidly spreading homelessness. Uh, but I also want to make sure we're properly diagnosing the problem. All of us on this council, we get it. People see this as a Portland problem, as a local issue that must be resolved at the local level, and we accept that. We see the polling numbers. They're horrific. We understand it. We empathize with what people are saying, and we do see a sense of urgency. I want you to know, this council has been unified and aggressive in addressing everything from significantly increasing the number of shelter spaces, managed campsites, navigation teams to go out into the community. We have supported directly investments in private sector, drug and alcohol treatment center, centers. Uh, we have worked with our partners at the county, the metro, at the state level. We significantly increased our funding in affordable housing, uh, and many other avenues. But the bottom line is, while we have these sense of urgency, we don't have the scale. And I think we have to be clear-eyed and honest with the public. What we are doing are the right approaches, but we are not doing it at anything close to the scale necessary to be able to successfully counter what is an epidemic of houselessness. And we also have to acknowledge, as we diagnose this, that it goes beyond just decisions that are made around this diets. Uh, meth, fentanyl and heroin are now legal drugs in small doses on the streets of this city. And that was a consequence of Measure One Ten. Measure One Ten also called for significant new statewide investments in drug and alcohol treatment, something I have advocated for for many years, something I feel very strongly about, something quite frankly is very personal to me. Uh, having been raised in a family often ravaged by addiction. And yet, there's this gap between the time when the drugs have been legalized and the time when the actual treatment facilities will come online. And therefore, uh, I call on my state partners to work with us. I'm not telling them what to do, but I'm saying, work with us to expedite the timeline for those treatment facilities to be online. We have all known, as Oregonians, and Alexandra, you'll be shocked to hear this, Oregonians are very compassionate people, that when it comes to mental health, we have known for decades that our mental health infrastructure is wholly inadequate to the challenges that exist in this state around mental health. We've known for a long time that Oregon is on the top of the list, somewhere in the top five states in terms of the need for mental health services. We've known this for a long, long time. This is not new news. And yet, we are number fifty out of fifty states in terms of our ability to deliver mental health and treatment services at the street level. Uh, again, that's not the purview of local government, but every member of this council is advocating loudly and aggressively and regularly for partnership with the state to help us work with our county partners and our state partners to restore the mental health infrastructure that this state so desperately needs. Commissioner Hirsty mentioned the federal government. Um, you know, we, we have this Build Back Better program stalling in Congress that has resources that we could use to address what is becoming a national epidemic of homelessness. This is not just now in Portland. This, this is virtually every city in America is now struggling with the complexity of this issue. And yes, the federal government had a role in this as well. Between, uh, you know, nineteen, the early nineteen eighties and where we are today, Democratic and Republican administrations both have reduced the support to local communities that would go towards building low-income and affordable housing. That has gone down by eighty percent since the nineteen eighties, and the assumption is to, local jurisdictions will pick it up. We're, we're like Mikey. Mikey will eat anything. Uh, but at some point, we get to the top level of what resources we have, the ability to deploy at the local level. Uh, and there are some aspects to this crisis where, you know, it, it's not in our area of expertise or delivery at all. Things like mental health and substance abuse, the city doesn't traditionally Things like mental health and substance abuse, the city doesn't traditionally do those things. We don't have professionals to deliver those services. That's another level of government. So what we have committed to doing is partnering. Where we are going to provide the strong leadership that I hope the community will rally around and be supportive of is we are bringing all the pieces together. We will bring the state together with our metro government, with our county government, with our local city councillors, and we will continue to partner and work together to collectively address this humanitarian catastrophe that is unfolding on our streets that impacts everybody. And yes, we have a very specific role to play around public safety. As Commissioner Maps said, we are working to restore our ability to enforce local ordinance in this community. And that's something I'm committed to, and I'm committed to working with the both of you and others. There are many, many people in this community who are concerned and are willing to lean into this complex issue and work with us to solve it. I will be tell, I'll tell you, sitting here listening to you, I agree with everything you said. I agree with everything you said. I hear you, and I hear it all day long. And like Commissioner Maps, I ask you to stay with us. You've stayed this long. You've stayed this long, and we are unified around this goal, and we are acting with urgency, and we are working hard to pull other jurisdictions into this at the county, the metro, the state level to work with us as well. And I think they're eager to do that. We need you, too. We need the private sector. We need employers. We need government agencies like yours. Work with us. We take responsibility for it here. We take it. We see the problem. We acknowledge the problem. We take responsibility. So now let's move on, and let's start working together on actionable solutions to improve the situation in which we find ourselves. That's my pledge to you, as well as my ask. A little bit longer than I wanted to go on, and I apologize, but this is the issue. And if we're not going to discuss this issue, then we might as well all go home. Dar, you had another comment?
Yes, I have two small points that I'd like to offer up. One is, with the current drug policy, decriminalized possession of a whole slew of different drugs, one piece that's missing is the will of the Portland Police, as well as police across the state, to issue the one hundred dollar ticket that is the entryway into the drug treatment stream for these people. That policy needs to be changed. Another point that I'd like to make is, as a business manager, and strictly speaking, from, not from my personal point of view, I personally am willing to stick this out, partner, and do whatever is necessary. But you have to understand, as a business manager and a representative of a federal agency, I'm being driven by forces outside of my control, and my concern for the well-being of my staff, as well as for the overall safety of our mission, is driving me, unfortunately, to arrange to flee the city of Portland. This is not a personal choice, sir. It is one that's being foisted upon me, and I feel that I have very little control over that. As a citizen, I'm here with you, but as a manager of a federal agency, the writing is on the wall unless there's significant improvement. It's been a downhill slide for four years with little improvement.
That's all I had to say. And I hear you, and I acknowledge that, and I want you to, I hear that from employers frequently. Look, employers need employees, and if you want to recruit people in a tight labor market, you have to be able to provide an attractive and safe place for people to work. I think we all acknowledge that, and I understand that, and I want to be clear, Dar. You have shown up here on more than one occasion, and you have been very frank with us. And I want you to know, I appreciate that. Just taking the time to be here is a sacrifice. You shouldn't have to be here, and you are, and I want to thank you for that. Alexandra, you, too. Thank you both.
Thank you, Mayor. You raised an important point, and we need a more public conversation with our other regional partners because this is not a problem that Portland, just by the wave of a wand, can solve on its own. As you mentioned, many of the issues that are really impacting life on the street aren't even issues that the city has the statutory responsibility for. Doesn't mean we haven't poured a whole bucket load of money into trying to address it, but I really think that what this conversation calls for is a much more public conversation with the county, with Metro, with an all-hands-on-deck approach. I, you know, I continue to say, any land that's government-owned should be accessible for temporary housing as we start stabilizing people. I mean, this is a conversation we've got to have together, and it's time, right? So I want to just reinforce what you just said. There are a lot of players in this conversation, but the governments that have the obligation for various parts of it need a public conversation about how we collectively are going to move forward. And I would also invite our congressional delegation because they have the ability to help us identify resources that we can target to make sure that we are, in fact, collectively, because we all say we're collectively moving in the same direction, but I don't think we are. And so I just want to throw that challenge out, not just to this council, I know this council's ready, but to all the people who actually have a responsibility for this. Because, you know, it's wonderful. We all feel it to our bone because we all, every day, all day, get those calls and emails. But we also know that we are, we're doing all we can with our limited resources.
Thank you, Commissioner, and I will agree with you that that's not on Dar, and that's not on Alexandra or anybody. That's on us. It's on, it is our responsibility to bring those players together to the table to work collectively. And I want you all to know, I accept that challenge. I take it very seriously. And in fact, some of those conversations are well underway right now, and I know Commissioner Ryan's been involved in them as well. Commissioner Maps, I saw you had your hand up, or was I mistaken?
My hand was up. I just wanted, before we break, I just wanted to reassure Alexandra and Dar that I'll continue to work with the mayor's office to convene our public safety group that's been communicating with your federal offices. And I'm deeply committed to implementing the reforms that come out of that conversation.
Thank you. All right, thanks. Folks, did you want to take a five-minute break here? Did I hear, I'm seeing a head nod, so why don't we take a five-minute recess? We will reconvene, it'll be a couple minutes more than that. Let's reconvene at ten thirty-five, just to make it even. We are in recess. Thank you.
Recording stopped.
All right, looks like we're all back. Kealan, why don't we go to time, sorry, the consent agenda? Has any item been pulled off of consent?
We've had no requests.
Please call the roll.
Rubio.
Hi.
Ryan.
Hi.
Hardesty.
Hi.
Maps. Wheeler.
All right, the consent agenda is adopted. First time certain item, which is item number sixty-five.
Mayor, would you like me to read sixty-five and sixty-six?
Yeah, I was just noticing that. Let's go ahead and read them together, please.
Sixty-five, assess benefited properties for street sidewalks, stormwater, and sanitary sewer improvements in the southeast Eightieth Avenue and Mill Street Local Improvement District. And sixty-six, authorize a five-year deferral of residential assessments in the southeast Eightieth Avenue and Mill Street Local Improvement District.
Thank you. And for those of you waiting for the Sport Oregon Annual Report, that'll be right after this. Commissioner Hardesty, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor, and colleagues. It's wonderful to bring you this local improvement district project finally across the finish line, where the city has comprehensively integrated street, stormwater, pedestrian, and sanitary sewer infrastructure into a single project stretching property owners' LID dollars and BES ratepayer LID dollars even further. This location at southeast Eightieth and Mills is adjacent to Bridger Elementary, a Title I school with a high proportion of low-income students who now will benefit from this project. We will also be showing a short video that will bring to life the folks benefiting from this project. In fact, one property owner who submitted testimony during the LID formation process waited fifty-three years for his sidewalks to be built, and we are now happy to have delivered them for him. At LID formation, we showed pictures of lakes of water after rain, after it rains, and we're happy that these children can now keep their feet and shoes dry when walking to school. Andrew Arby from P-Bot is here to walk us through the ordinance, and I'm going to let Andrew take it away. But before I turn it over to Andrew, I want to give some acknowledgements. I want to be, I want to thank Sarah King, who was formerly with Portland Public Schools, and she's now with the City of Beaverton, who was really instrumental in providing Portland Public School funding for this LID. I also want to thank current Commissioner Maps for the BES and Portland Water Bureau partnership on this project. I also want to take a moment to appreciate former Commissioner, the late Commissioner Nick Fish, for the BES and Portland Water Bureau partnership on this project, who provided the funding and commented on the benefits to ratepayers of aligning P-Bot's work with BES and Portland Water Bureau for a win-win-win for ratepayers and community members. And so I'm going to turn it over to Andrew. Andrew, take it away.
Thank you, Commissioner Hardesty. This really was a triple win, not just for P-Bot and BES, but also for the Water Bureau as well. We didn't have stormwater facilities in this area. We had an undersized sanitary sewer pipe with sewage occasionally backing up into people's basements. And we also had an undersized galvanized water main in the area that wasn't big enough and of the proper pipe type. So I'm really, really pleased that we're able to pull together all three bureaus to get this project built. As you alluded in your remarks, Commissioner Hardesty, the request came in during the mayoral administration of Fred Peterson in the nineteen-fifties, and we're pleased that during Mayor Ted Wheeler's administration, many years later, we were able to bring this project across the finish line. So with that, if we could switch over to a very brief PowerPoint, I'll show you some before and after pictures, and then we'll switch to the video. We can move on to the next slide, please. So this is just the map of the LID area with Bridger Elementary School in the top, upper left-hand corner. And you can see that the eastern boundary of the cell ID is eighty-second Avenue, and I think the entire council knows how important eighty-second Avenue is in P-Bot's portfolio right now, and we're really, really happy that we could get a head start on building some pedestrian improvements adjacent to eighty-second Avenue before the ownership transfer occurs from ODOT to P-Bot. Next slide. So these are pictures that some residents of the street sent to me pleading for my help in forming a local improvement district. This is what it was like taking their toddler out for a walk to their toddler's eventual elementary school when he got old enough to start school. So what BES had originally planned to do was just dig a thirty-foot hole in the street and put in a new upsized sanitary sewer, and then put down what we call hot patch pavement and cover up the pavement, but not put any stormwater management system curbs or sidewalks in place. So this is a real opportunity to add to BES's assets by building a proper stormwater management system. Next slide, please. So this is another picture taken by that same resident. One of the residents on the street has a husband who uses a mobility device, and when he would go outside in the morning for a little bit of fresh air on a rainy day, his caregiver had to push his wheelchair through this kind of a street. So we're really, really pleased that now he has a dry place and some sidewalks to travel on. Next slide, please. And so, as I mentioned, the eastern project limit was eighty-second Avenue. You can see this is what the street looked like as we were wrapping up construction. So we completely reconstructed the street after we put in that thirty-foot-deep sanitary sewer. And you can see that we also have sidewalks leading up to eighty-second Avenue, which is the most heavily traveled bus line in the Tri-Met system. Next slide, please. This is what Eightieth Avenue looked like south of Bridger Elementary School before we started the project. Was very, very pleased to be able to partner with Urban Forestry to figure out a way to save those big giant trees you see there in the middle of the street. We were able to just actually put a curb around those, those trees and preserve those trees in the middle of the street. And tree preservation was very important to the community. So if you switch to the next slide. And this is what Eightieth Avenue looked like. This was another way to get to Bridger Elementary School before we started the project. One of the school principals told me that, or told us, rather, the community said to watch my student come to school with wet shoes is heartbreaking to me. And here's, here's an example of kids having to, you know, step through mud and potholes to get to school. But if you switch to the next slide, you can see this is what it looked like after we built the project. We put that curb around the trees in the middle. It's now a very walkable, bikeable area. And very pleased with the results and the support we had in the community and Portland Public Schools in building this project. Next slide, please. And now we're going to switch over to a video. This is Ophelia Lara. She is in this video, and we're going to switch over and hear her, the comments she made before we started this project, and then she'll be here to offer some remarks afterwards. Kealan, are we ready to go with the video?
Yes, I think we're about ready. Let me check in with our broadcaster to see if the video is able to be played.
Kealan, why don't we do that for the interest of keeping this moving forward? How about if we go ahead and just have Ophelia join us for the remarks? And if we can get the video to work afterwards, we can just reverse the sequence of things.
Sounds great. Thanks, Andrew.
Ophelia, would you like to go ahead and get started for us?
Yes, thank you. Good morning. Well, do you want me to speak in Stanish or English? Can you hear me? Can you folks hear me?
Ophelia, when I got you signed up, I didn't realize that your command of English was so good. So why don't we go ahead and excuse the interpreter and just have you go ahead and speak in English? You're, you have good command of both languages. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Well, good morning, everyone. It's an honor to be here. And I just want to say thank you for the invitation and to make this possible for me to be here. My name is Ophelia Lara. I'm from, my, my parents are from Mexico. I'm from Mexico and the United States. And my kids, my husband, we both, we all love both countries, especially Oregon. I'm a mother of three beautiful children. They attend Bridger School since kindergarten. And then, you know, so we are, we are a family, you know, Bridger family, and we love our Bridger family. We care for each other. We care for our kids, for our community, and for, we'd like to, everybody to be safe. And I just want to be, I just want to say thank you for the great, your great project, you know, repairing our streets around the school. It's wonderful. It's just, just wonderful to see now that our kids can walk safe and as a parent, and everybody can be safe. And I think it does not only, not only that our kids are, feel safe and our parents and our entire Bridger community, but also we're, I think we're teaching a good message to our kids. You know, they always, we can improve as a student, as a community, as a parent, and, you know, the projects can improve. And this street looks amazing. And, and the name of our Bridger community, I just want to thank to everyone who make this possible. It's just, just a joy. And I think the kids are happier, you know, to, to go to school now. They see, you know, to just, it's just, just beautiful around our school. I just want to say thank you. Thank you to everyone. I love to see those prizes, that transformation. My husband and I would have a small construction company, and we worked for different bureaus in Portland. And I just love to see, we, we work on remodel, renovation projects, and this is just amazing, just to see this transformation. You folks are looking at the pictures before and now after. It's just beautiful. I just want to say thank you. Thank you to all who make this possible. It's just, we're very thankful and grateful for that.
Thank you, Ophelia. Kealan, last call for that video, if you're able to get it running. If not, I think that concludes our testimony. Looks like we've got the video. Thank you.
I walk here to school every single day with my brother. And from my house, the, the street that we walk in, there's really no sidewalks, and there's a lot of cars parked on the side, and so we always have to walk in the middle of the road. And my mom is always nervous when we walk to school because some cars, they, you know, they don't pay attention.
We come two blocks to school. Half of our walk is unimproved road with one-foot mud puddles. The other half of our walk is a block with no sidewalks and cars parked along the side of the road, which force us to walk down the middle of the road.
My mom drops me off at Gwen's house, and we, me and Gwen walk together to school. My favorite way of getting to school is walking with Ava.
cerca de nuestra escuela, aquí en Bridger, no hace mucho tiempo venía, este, yo traigo a mis niños a la escuela. Estoy parqueada en la calle, la calle MEO, y es una calle que está totalmente en malas condiciones con pozos, este, hoyos con agua, lodo, y este es muy difícil. Cuando vienen los papás con sus niños, yo estaba, me parqué en la, en la orilla de esa calle para, verdad, para traer a mis niños. Está, los iba, viene por ellos. Íbamos ya a la casa, y estaba poniéndolos en el asiento, estaba poniendo su cinturón de, de seguridad. Cuando pasa un carro, y yo estaba de espaldas totalmente, me baña de agua con lodo y sucia desde mi cabeza, verdad, quedé toda mojada, y pues no podía creer que estuviera pasando eso, pero pasó. Entonces esto fue, me mojó esta vez. Gracias a Dios no fue algo, este, trágico, pero puede, así como pasó eso, me, este, puede pasar un accidente porque...
Well, there's a bunch of water puddles, mud puddles, and there's no sidewalks, so it's like really hard to get to school.
Tell me, how do you get to school?
Um, with my scooter.
Yeah, tell me about your scooter.
Well, I like to scoot down with it, but I haven't really did it for a long time because it was free vacation.
We always walk to school because we live really close, but we're on an unimproved road, so it doesn't feel too safe. Sometimes the cars slide around. We feel a little nervous about that, but...
Well, it's pretty dirty. It's pretty dirty. And like, like at night, after practice, after we have our basketball practice, like it's really pitch dark, and we can't see nothing. And with the, like, roads being puddles and stuff, like you might get stepped in there, and cars might not see. So it might, like, it's a possibility that a car could hit you.
So we live on Eightieth and Division, in between Division and Clinton, so we don't have a safe, easy spot to cross to walk to school. We have to drive, we go down to seventy-six and take seventy-six. If we had a place that was, like, easily crossable, we would totally walk more.
You know, I ride the bus. When the bus picks us up and tries to get out, there's a lot of car that's going very fast, so it takes a long time for the bus to even get in the lane and go. And then when we get around the school block, the, the cars are going really fast, and it's really compact, so it takes a long time for the bus to get in. So most of the time, we're kind of a little bit late. But the only good thing is the bus gets to our stop earlier, so we're actually not late.
Okay.
So you've heard Ophelia in both English and Spanish. I just wanted to be closed by saying we did receive one objection to final assessment. The LID final assessment ordinance includes the directive to overrule that objection and approve the assessments as proposed. And I also encourage council to approve Agenda Item Number sixty-six, which will offer a five-year residential deferral for the property owner who submitted the objection. So that concludes our presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Colleagues, any questions at this point? If not, Kealan, do we have any public testimony on either of these two items?
No one signed up, Mayor.
Very good. So, Andrew, let me ask you a question. Did, did you have an additional presentation on sixty-six or those basically combined?
It's basically a combined presentation, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Ryan has a question.
Well, really, I just have a statement, a comment. First of all, Andrew, it's good to see you, and thank you for that wonderful presentation. We just had some dialogue about, oh, I'd say, different entities not knowing really how to work together to align work to get something done. So it was really aspirin to have you show up and talk about the collaboration with Portland Public Schools, and then offering some amazing before-and-after photos. I know that area really well. It was not, and there was no propaganda there. That was very honest and well-done. So I just wanted to say thank you for the good work. It was very refreshing to see. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Maps?
And I just want to echo some of my colleague Dan Ryan's comments. I'd like to reach out here and express my appreciation for Commissioner Hardesty and Andrew for their leadership on this project. Also want to thank Ophelia for her testimony today. I would also hold this project up as a model for intra-bureau collaboration. P-Bot, Environmental Services, Water, the Forestry Program, all really worked together to make a brilliant project. I, I hope that we, as a council, can work together to replicate projects like this throughout the city. Thank you.
Commissioner Rubio?
I just want to, again, echo my colleagues. Big appreciation to Commissioner Hardesty for bringing this forward, and also to Andrew for the great presentation. This, these kinds of projects make me happy. I too know, you know, this neighborhood, these families, it's, it's something they've been wanting for a long time. So it, it, it feels really good to see the great work that went into this and how this is very resonant and in meeting, and responsive in meeting a, a community need that, that helps our, our children. So, great job. Looking forward to tracking this.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Hardesty.
And I just wanted to add, if my colleagues, if you have not seen these improvements, the care that was taken to preserve these big old trees was pretty phenomenal. And so talk about the creativity, not just a cross-bureau collaboration, but the creativity that was used to create a place that anybody would be thrilled to go to every day. And how wonderful for the parents and the students and the teachers that they now have more pride every day they walk in the door of that building. And Andrew, the presentation was just spectacular. I, I couldn't have asked for anything more.
All right, very good. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Andrew. Item number sixty-five is a non-emergency ordinance. It moves to second reading. Item number sixty-six likewise is a non-emergency ordinance. It also moves to second reading. Great presentation. Next item, please. Item number sixty-seven, which is a report.
Accept Sport Oregon's annual report on national and international sports marketing activities and event recruiting services.
This report is a requirement of the city's contract with Sport Oregon to provide sports, marketing, and event recruiting services that bring signature sporting events to our great city. Sport Oregon works tirelessly to attract signature national and international sporting events to our city, providing exciting entertainment options, raising the city's profile, and of course, supporting our local economy. Today, we're joined by Jim Etzel, who is the CEO of Sport Oregon, who's going to present the report. It's important to note the events sports, Sport Oregon helps bring to our city, enrich our community culturally as well as economically, and they also generate city revenues by increasing the number of hotel rooms booked by major event attendees and generating user fees for events at the Rose Quarter Arenas as well as at Providence Park. I've been particularly heartened by the partnerships and the collaborative nature that Jim and his team have brought to the table during an incredibly challenging time for all of us. Sport Oregon continues to work and advocate on behalf of Portland and many other local communities. With that, I'll turn this over to our presenter, Jim. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Mayor Wheeler, and Commissioners Hardesty, Maps, Rubio, and Ryan. I really appreciate your time, interest in this report today. I also like to give a shout-out to our liaison with the city, Carl Lyle, who's the city's spectator venues program manager, just for his professionalism and leadership in working with our staff and our board throughout the year in this partnership. So without further ado, just, I want to jump into the report. And just keep in mind that this reporting period started eighteen months ago and ended six months ago. There's a lot of overlap and things, so I just don't want to create any confusion as I step through things. But, you know, introducing this, obviously COVID-19 during this period had tremendous effect on our community, our work, et cetera. And the, I think, the exciting thing was, was the recognition by our board, by Travel Portland, by you, that the importance of the role that sports and events can play in the vitality and also the recovery for our community. So kudos to everyone for staying committed, as well as our over one hundred and twenty-five corporate partners that support us through annual membership dues. We've really worked during this period to strengthen existing relationships, to really build upon them and make them stronger with local tourism business associations, including Travel Portland, Portland Business Alliance, Greater Portland, Inc., the city, to effectively, you know, drive and contribute to this recovery effort. Also, there's other relationships that we've really worked on. Portland Parks and Recreation, meeting with their leadership from the top down to see how we can more efficiently and effectively engage the facilities and assets of Portland Parks to turn those on as economic drivers for events. So we've had quite a bit of success. It's going to start to show results in the current fiscal year and next fiscal year. So kudos there. Even looking at relationships in Washington County, along with Travel Portland, on, there are certain events that want to come to the metro area, but the city doesn't have the facility or the massified field complexes per se at, at the moment. So we don't want to turn our back on those. How do we make those benefit us? So if we can guide those into Washington County, work with them, and then we really generate overflow rooms back into the city of Portland hotel rooms, that is a, a strategy that has really been effective as well. So that is, you know, I think that's the strength of relationships and partnering and just having a unified vision of how we can work together. TID, as you recall, this past summer, you, the council, passed the increase in TID. We began to lay the groundwork with Travel Portland in the fiscal year twenty-one around this concept of Sport Oregon getting some funding to really strengthen our position amongst our peer group nationally and to start to get our fair share of marketplace coming to Portland. We were at a significant competitive disadvantage because of lack of resources, both in staffing and budget for travel to be present at the various national conference marketplaces where we recruit these events. Resulted, that investment resulted, starting this past July, in additional staff. We now have three people in our sports tourism team completely focused on Portland. And again, the funnel is starting to fill, and the results are starting to, you know, show themselves. You know, I talked about the competitive... You know, I talked about the competitive marketplace. You got to be present to win. We were only present at one of the five marketplaces. You can't win when your competitors are at all five. So that was huge. And that funnel is starting to overflow, which is awesome. You know, elevated visibility. The leadership, again, everybody's put a focus on this, you know, but are really deepening and widening the cooperation with our sports franchises, our local colleges, and the sports community at large. And that's started to increase the visibility nationally, getting creative on how we fill a Providence Park, how we fill a VMC, how we fill a Moda Center with opportunities that we may not have looked closely at in the past or have the ability to engage with. Again, a lot of that is now happening because of the TID funding. And so, you know, I think you're going to see Portland as a destination and opportunities on the rise. Creative thinking in the COVID world, we pivoted fast and really kept a close pulse on the sports event world, what was going on. We tried to create bubble-like event opportunities. We were in deep conversations with the Pac-12 Conference, the West Coast Conference, Big Sky amongst others, about creating college basketball bubbles for women's and men's basketball at the Oregon Convention Center. We had complete health protocols in place. Unfortunately, I guess, those conferences didn't pivot to bubble concepts. They kept them on campus, but we had created a pathway to make that happen in Portland if that had happened. Same thing with the National Women's Soccer League Bubble. This one was very close to happening and at the last minute, as COVID variants changed, the league was actually able to keep play at their home stadiums and not have to go to a bubble. But if it had happened, it would have been in Portland. And also some major youth basketball tournaments where we would have brought in twenty-plus courts into the convention center and activate. Again, those things didn't bear fruit, but we were in pursuit and ready to try to create opportunity in the marketplace. We also created a stakeholder group, the franchises and universities, in particular, also facilities like PIR, the Rose Quarter, Providence Park, around having a unified voice in Salem with the governor and the Oregon Health Authority and leadership there on what, we didn't want them to be in a vacuum and just know what they knew here in Oregon. We wanted to be able to share with them what was common practices around the country. So a lot of work went into that. Bids and events, you know, obviously it was a year of postponements and cancellations and all that. But we remain very active in the marketplace and really not just focused on short term, but kept our eye on long term to better position ourselves. We all know we lost, I hate bringing up losing things, the women's final four, but there's a silver lining in this and that we did secure in this bid process. We positioned ourselves well for the future, to get a future final four if the NCAA still chooses to keep that separated from the men. And I hope they do from an inequity position standpoint. But we were able to secure an eighteen women's super regional. And you'll recall that happened in twenty nineteen with great success, most successful Western Regional ever hosted for women's basketball. We will get that event times two, and then instead of fourteen, it's now eighteen regional in twenty twenty-four. We also won a bid in for men's first and second rounds in twenty twenty-six. We'll be hosting one here this March, so you'll be seeing that shortly. I think it's important to note that Portland was one of only six markets in this bid cycle that received two or more awards in that four-year cycle. The year before, the cycle before this, that we're just wrapping up this year, we were the only market to receive three bids in a bid cycle. So kudos to everybody on that. Vancouver Whitecaps, I think this is an interesting story. Obviously, we're all aware of the border closure that happened. We leaned in with the Timbers and MLS and tried to create a place for the Vancouver Whitecaps to train and compete. It's a really neat story, but they made the downtown Portland Hilton in the summer and fall of twenty twenty their home for over forty-five days. It turned into sixteen hundred room nights. It allowed the Hilton to open up the main tower again and bring a significant twenty-plus people back to full-time employment. So that was a neat little micro story in that year. I think as we look ahead into the current fiscal year, this is just a brief summary of some of the events. The one I'd really like to point out is NASCAR coming here this June. I think that this is a great story. You, the council, over five years ago, were active with us in working to bring IndyCar back to PIR, a facility that really had been dormant from a major event standpoint for over a decade since IndyCar had left. To be able to turn a city-owned facility, a part of the Portland Parks, back into an economic driver of significance was huge. And the success with IndyCar coming back in the marketplace four years ago led to conversations that started about two years ago about why not NASCAR? And we know what happened. We got awarded last fall NASCAR, working with the same promoter, Green Savory Racing, that brings IndyCar here. And this is a big win. So far, tickets for June have far, expectations were high and expectations are being exceeded right now with ticket sales. What's also interesting is the heat map of where the sales are coming from, not just from our metropolitan area, but far more significant than what we see in IndyCar. We're seeing significant sales in Boise, Spokane, all the way up to Canada on the I-5 pathway and all the way down to Northern California. So our, what we were wishful for is actually coming to fruition. So we'll see a lot of room nights and a lot of visitors to Portland in June. Our staff is also working very actively, our partnership team, with Green Savory to try to secure a presenting partner for this, which will also combine with good attendance, strong attendance, will send a signal to NASCAR in our aspirations to move from Xfinity Series to Cup Series, which is the top tier. So really exciting there. Another win we had last fiscal year, or the seeds were planted last fiscal year, this fiscal year, we finally got awarded the Sports ETA Annual Symposium. Working with our local partners and the hospitality community, we're going to turn this opportunity in twenty twenty-four. The national marketplace comes here. I hate using this word, but because it has negative connotations, but we're treating it as a hostage event. We're going to take these rights holders and really personalize their experience in our community. We're going to add shoulders on the front end and the back end of this, working with hospitality, community, Travel Portland, Travel Oregon. And how do we take them on a deeper, wider experience on the edges of the convention to show them what our community has to offer? And this event, you know, we are, our strategy is to make this a rainmaker event for the next decade in event wins. This will happen in the spring of twenty-four, so two years from now. Another area that we put a lot of focus on now is franchise and facility development. Ongoing conversations with Portland Diamond Project. I know we were out at Terminal One with Commissioner Maps two weeks ago. This Diamond Project, you aren't hearing a lot about it right now, but it's very much alive. And we are doing everything we can to help facilitate this opportunity. There's also been conversations, groups emerge over the last year around WNBA possibilities for Portland. There's two identified groups right now. They have not publicly come out a summit because of NDAs and some of the conversations. I'm not in a position to identify them. Both are viable in different ways, and this will be an interesting one to follow. But this would be great because it would add another franchise to the Rose Quarter. There is differing opinions on where the best place for opportunity to play is, whether it's Moda Center or VMC. There's pros and cons to both, so it'll be interesting to see where that goes. We're still involved with Veterans Memorial Coliseum Advisory Committee and the ongoing conversations there. The, this is an interesting one, Albina Sports Complex out off Forty-second, a couple blocks off Killingsworth, on the former Whittaker and Adams High School site and Fernhill Park. Gary Hollins from the Portland School Board approached Travel Portland and ourselves about two years ago about this. And we've been kind of working behind the scenes with him to, you know, keep this alive. It did come public recently, and so we're very much in these conversations as well as Metro's current RFEI process around the Expo Center. We've been out there numerous times with Metro, with Expo staff, and with professionals around how we could take either the entire facility or the two newest halls, D and E, and turn that into a significant, you know, community sports complex. We've even brought Albana Sports Complex Party to this conversation because it's a huge head start when you start with two free-span structures like that. And there's an interesting dialogue going there on as well. So again, trying to bring people together that have common goals. Our commitment to, you know, DEI in the community remains strong. I talked about this to you last late spring, early summer. We're very intentional around our work as a board around DEI. I'm proud to say that thirty-three percent of our eighty-five board members are from BIPOC communities and represent those. It's a huge increase from where we were. I think it's been, we're just excited about the inclusivity and the voices we have at the table now around our mission. We had a more modest increase on female leadership, at twenty-six percent of our board members are female. But I will point out that of our executive board, our current president is Chris Van Wagner from Providence. Our secretary is Sherry Roden from Standard, the Standard Company, and our treasurer is Valerie Colgrove, CFO of AAA. So three of our four officers are women. And we have a good history of our board presidents. We've had five board presidents have been females, so. But we got work to do there. Part of that, we see that will help us grow the number of women on our board, is our She Flies initiative. But first on Fuel the Future, you heard me talk about that last year. This is our initiative around really breaking down barriers to physical activities for kids in our underserved communities. We support other nonprofits as well that do really good work, that need a little lean in and lift. Said a couple examples, the Hopscotch Foundation, Street Soccer USA, Playworks. Our She Flies is our new platform that our foundation has launched. We have an event tomorrow at four o'clock. It's a virtual event, but this is one to watch, really addressing the inequities and challenges and hurdles facing keeping girls physically active, not just as young women, but for a lifetime. So I encourage you to visit sheflies.org to learn more about this exciting program that we have within our foundation. Now, challenges, you know, identifying, we talked about facilities, you know, where's the capital going to come from? So we're in a lot of interesting conversations there. And this is something that we're observing our peer groups around the country. A lot of facility opportunities have been public-private partnerships, looking to see what works and what doesn't work there and do some of those things, could they apply here? Do we have potential partners here? An interesting example is the McCormick and Baxter property that's a superfund site below the bluff in North Portland by the railroad bridge, between the railroad bridge and University of Portland. But there's a group, Restore Cap, that is looking. They have an option to buy that property from Charlie McCormick, but there's interest in possibly building fields, athletic fields on that space because that might be the best use for it and only use for it. So we're in the middle of some dialogue there. But and then, you know, overcoming current realities, we hear all about this. I don't need to talk about this. The one note we're putting, I see is really big is, you know, and you guys touched upon it about the partnership that we need from the state to invest in our community because the ODOT and highway, the path system for anybody coming into our community, it starts at the airport, it starts at the I-5 Bridge, it starts in Wilsonville when you come in, even goes down in Salem. We see the problems as we work around the state. But it's people's first impressions, our front porch, and it just seems the neglect there is, as, as we hear about it when we're out nationally or when we bring people in for site visits. They understand some of the problems that we're dealing with within the city, but it's that front porch where we can control and, you know, but you guys are all too well aware of that. With that, I just say thank you for this partnership. You know, we're in it together and appreciate the collaborations, support you guys have given us, so does our board. And I'm open to any questions or comments you have.
Commissioner Hardesty, then Commissioner Ryan.
Sorry, you think I know by now. Thank you, Mayor. Jim, let me just say, I am so grateful for your leadership with Sports Oregon. You and I've had some really hard conversations over the last few years, and I am proud of the progress that I see that has been made and it is reflected both in your board and your staff. And I just want to start off by saying, thank you, thank you, thank you. I see that you really took some questions to heart and it is now just in your DNA. And I just want to start there and say, thank you, thank you, thank you. It shows up and I see it. And I also wanted to go back to a couple of things that you talked about. One is two conversations that you're currently in. One about the sports, potential sports complex in northeast Portland. And for, so I want to just have you explain how your board operates because we've had this conversation before about potential redevelopment of properties that are owned by the city. And so I just want to make sure that new people to the community understand what this, how your board operates and how that relates to decisions that this council will need to make.
Our board, we're an association of members, as most of you are aware. And they are financial support for our organization, a significant portion of it, in addition to support we get from you and the travel industry. They are more in advisory role to the staff and to also advocate around things and help educate our greater community around this. So they are all espousing kind of the work that we're doing and evangelizing it, if you want to say. You know, we aren't operating in a vacuum on different things. We think it's really important to understand where the community stands, where the opportunity is seen. And so that's the approach. We never, our board never takes a position where we want to drive something through and that's against the greater good of the community or, and we know we need, you know, we need elected officials. We need broad-based community support. We need to have a strong case that anything that we're behind makes sense, can work, and is additive to our community.
Thank you for that, Jim. And because what I know is that over the next five years, we're going to have billions of dollars in transportation projects that are going to really help solidify our climate-resilient goals. And I think that, and we're also having really big conversations about reknitting Albina Community through the Albina Vision Trust. And so I'm just concerned that there are many tables that are envisioning of Portland that aren't tables where elected leaders are. And the tables where elected leaders are making decisions aren't necessarily connected to the tables that are voluntary advisory and providing a vision for us to consider. So I'm concerned at some point, we're going to have four or five competing visions about where we're moving as a city and what the, what the impact will be of billions of dollars in transportation, infrastructure improvements, and housing people can afford to live in. And I'm taking nothing away from sports because, you know, entertainment is a big part of building community. But I just don't want to have that conversation in isolation of the significant decisions that are coming down the pipe in the next few years. So and this is more of a conversation, I guess, for the rest of us. It's like, we have to make sure that these conversations are not happening in isolation because otherwise there'll be a lot of very disappointed tables. Because otherwise, there'll be a lot of very disappointed tables when we start really knitting the weave of how we collectively come out of this economic devastation and start rebuilding the kind of Portland that regardless of your income, you'll be able to live it. So I, 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 I hope that we find a way to knit these conversations together so that we're not working at competing interests. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hurst and Commissioner Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor, and good to see you, Jim Metzl. My fellow North Portland friend, and I love the picture you have on the thank you here. I was at that ballgame.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then we found out that COVID was going to cancel the rest of the tournament, the March Madness. And the Oregon Women Ducks didn't become the national champions that year. So a little bit of grieving about that. Anyway, it's good to see you. A few questions. I just want to make sure that when you mentioned the Xfinity Cup, that's the NASCAR series. Is that the right language?
Correct.
Okay, that along with the Open Disc Golf, and I know that's a big deal from many people. And I like the fact that that's being held in Portland. That's, those are both this coming June, correct?
Correct.
And there, are you partnering with the Rose Festival and with both of them?
We are working very, I worked very closely to set copy with Jeff Curtis two weeks ago, had a conversation yesterday. So we're working with them. We're trying to work through the politics at NASCAR, not from the promoter, because the promoter wants to make it happen, to make the NASCAR event an officially sanctioned Rose Festival event, which will help create lift. And so again, always trying to work on how do we create mutual benefit and lift throughout our community instead of having things going down separate paths. So, you know, what Commissioner Hurst, he just talked about. So
And how about with the Open Disc Golf? Is that in conversation with Rose Festival as well?
Yes, we're trying to make sure that it's on their calendar. Jeff's very open to that as well.
Hey, Mayor appointed me as the liaison to the Rose Festival. So that is why I'm asking such questions. But no, it's exciting that the Rose Festival Science Willing is going to be back and on our streets. And having that knitted together will be very important. So that's why that was of interest to me. You alluded to some of this and the challenges, but I don't want to speculate. I was really disappointed when I was following the, the fact that we didn't get the women's final four. And especially when you noted, because it was true, that we had the most successful super regional of any site in the history of women's basketball. So it doesn't really make sense that, in my opinion, we did not receive that award. Now, I know you were being very diplomatic and careful, but my gut just assumed that it's connected to some of the challenges you pointed to. Could you, could you give some truth to that? And we, we hear everything on this at the
Yeah, I mean.
Don't, don't hold back, Jim.
Yeah, I, I won't hold back. But, you know, there, there's a lot of factors. That was one. That was one. There was
What was that one to just say it so we know?
Just, you know, one factor probably was what, what we were, how we were politicized, what was going on, you know, through, through everything on the national media. I think, you know, there is a certain reality that some of the things we're experiencing were no different than other parts of the country. But, you know, it, it, it was kind of loud here compared to other places and especially from the national media coverage. There is other factors that have to be acknowledged. Number one, we are a first time bidder. Very rarely does a first time bidder win. I went in and our, and we, our group went in with confidence because we thought we were worthy and we could win. And so I was not shy about saying, I think we can win.
Yeah.
You know, and my dad's baseball coaching, growing up, son of a coach, hey, you strike out, you dust yourself off, get back in the batter's box, we're going to go after it again. But that was one. Number two, because of COVID, there, that, that decision on where to go got pushed back almost, I want to say four or five months. In that time from our original presentations back in Indianapolis, where the women's basketball committee, selection committee convenes, we presented to one group because the decision got pushed back because of COVID. That group had a rollover where six people came off and six new people came on and with six existing people. And so we went through a rotation where we never got a chance directly to meet with the entire new group. I don't think that helped us either. So there's, you know, a number of things. And we have to own, own the realities. And those are two additional realities to what our city is going through. So I think the fact that we did get awarded a twenty-four event that I touched on and a twenty-six event I touched on in that, in that bid cycle. Does, you know, that shows that, that Portland's, they wouldn't have given it to us if our city was the problem or that, you know, the issues we're dealing with, houses and public safety and, and the protests at that moment. Okay, the protests were at that moment. So if those were the real reasons we didn't get the final four, then I don't think they would have awarded, especially that super regional event, which so I think, you know, let's acknowledge that.
Absolutely. And then we have the big March Madness, first two rounds coming up this March.
Yep.
And then I know I'd like to, I think we have a tour coming up with, at University of Portland to dig deeper into that. So thank you for giving more information about the athletic fields. And basically, I just wanted to end with another question about, you mentioned the Diamond Project. And then in the same part of that presentation, you talked about public-private as, well, later on about one of the challenges. Would you speak more to what that, what that means?
My public-private comment was more around athletic facilities that are, are really community activity based or trying to draw a major list, if it's an outdoor complex, it's a massified field complex. So what's massified field definition? It's, it's, it's public knowledge that the I-5 corridor from Redding, California to Vancouver, B.C. is the only region in the country that completely lacks a massified field complex of twelve fields or more, which draws the big regional and national tournaments almost every weekend for. And that, not, so you have two types of field complexes. One would be ones that could be used for soccer, lacrosse, football, less so football, soccer, lacrosse. And then the other type of field complex is a softball, baseball-type multi-use complexes. We don't have those, not just Portland, but the whole metropolitan or the whole state in the, in the, in the, in the quantity needed to really win in this area. And it's most, we're losing business to Spokane and Boise. Families are going over the mountains four to six weekends a year to go to these events. But also, we're losing Monday through Friday in our community of having really quality facilities for our kids to play in at every income level. And so then the indoor deal is having a free span place, space where we can have up to sixteen to eighteen basketball courts and over twenty-four volleyball courts in or an indoor track and/or an indoor track in. Again, these are economic drivers and they're also community lifters during the week in every way from participation. So where we're looking at, we don't want to go to areas where the kids that need it the, the, the most are going to have a tough time getting to. So, you know, we're, we're not, you know, it's tough enough to find open spaces anywhere or opportunities, but we got to go to where there's access to our most underserved communities to make these things benefit them and not just middle-class or upper-class kids that have parents that can afford for travel teams and stuff like that. We really need to be, you know, lead from, you know, the point of, you know, the, the kids that have the most barriers to activity. And then go from there. And then everything else can benefit on top of that.
Then finally, that was really helpful. And I'm glad that you went into the youth sports angle. Where the Diamond Project, where, where is that? I really didn't get enough detail about where that is today. And when you're speaking of that, are you also looping in public-private? Or are, are stadiums actually built to that magnitude with just private resources anywhere in the country?
The reality of baseball in, in Portland area is that it will have to be funded, the construction stuff privately. The public partnership would be around infrastructure. And, but, you know, there's not too many stadiums and arenas built that are privately done. Portland's the, one of the primary examples of where it has to be done. And, and, and the Diamond Project realizes those realities and, and is, I think, you know, they have built a strategy around that. So the, the key thing is, is having a, a Portland city, a Portland site that can work for the investor group. There is an identified site and that's really comes, keeps coming back to Terminal One and maybe parts of Terminal Two and the two private spaces in between. And then there is one suburban site in Washington County. So.
Thank you for that clarity on the record. I really appreciate that. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
I look forward to seeing you at the Rose Garden for the March Madness.
All right.
All right.
Commissioner Raps.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Jim and Sports Oregon for all your work today. I'm not going to really have a question. I'm mostly going to praise you and explain why I think the work that you're doing is so important. And I truly do believe that the work that you're doing is critical to the future and the recovery of our city. As my colleagues know, many parts of Portland's economy are booming right now. But certainly, the laggard in terms of economic recovery tends to be tourism and the hospitality industries. Those industries have been crippled during the COVID era and are not coming back fast enough. I think some of the challenges that you are facing trying to attract sporting events to our city sort of illustrates the dilemma that we're in. But our city is not going to fully recover until we're able to pull together events that pull together Portlanders. We obviously have an awful lot of work to do here. I'm really committed to working with you to helping tell Portland's story and getting ready for some of these major events. I know it's especially challenging work. I appreciate all the shots on goal that you have been making over the past year. I know it's challenging sometimes, you know, to, to pitch Portland and, and not connect. But let, please let this council know what we can do to help support you. I'd love to see these events come back to town and I'd love to lure some of these ongoing investments in our city like baseball or, or the WNBA to Portland. That would be great. And I sure hope that that's part of our future. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Raps. Commissioner Rubio.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you, Jim, and to you and your team at Sport Oregon for continuing to, to work of attracting these events to the city. It's really great to hear that even in the midst of all of these challenges with COVID, that you've been successful in positioning the city for these opportunities and that you've been successful and we have some in the queue. The ones that are most directly on my radar right now in my work with parks is right now is like cyclocross and also IndyCar races and the upcoming NASCAR series. These are really huge things for the city. And it means millions of dollars for our local economy and small businesses. And it's really critical to our economic recovery. So I just want to also say thank you for the presentation, your work. And again, echoing my, my colleagues, let me know how my office and my bureaus and in my portfolio can, 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 can continue to be supportive or to do more to be supportive. But I'd also love to think through with you about parks and specifically PIR and how to do more or optimize this space and to think about what additional opportunities that could bring. And I don't know if you, your team have had any thoughts about that, that you're ready just to, to talk about. Otherwise, we'd love to talk to you later.
Yeah, I'll make a few brief comments. Commissioner Rubio, thank you. The, you know, PIR specifically, again, five years ago, it was dormant. It had lots of events, but not driving a lot of economic benefit with major events. Today, five years later, we have two major economic anchors, one in June, one on Labor Day weekend that are ten million dollar impact plus events. So we've taken a city facility that has been major event dormant and turned it on again as a driver in our community. And that makes all the events in between stronger because there's been improvements made out there by those race series to the facility that our community is benefiting, the other users of those facilities are benefiting. Also, just, you know, in conversations with the Dean Long and, and Todd Lofgren and the Parks team that are on the front end of conversations is, you know, it's hard to find space to build twelve soccer fields or sixteen softball diamonds. How should we relook at what we have as assets in our park system? I'll use the example of Delta Park. We've got nine soccer fields out there. We need twelve. We have five or six softball diamonds. We need twelve. Should we think about, and everything kind of needs upgrading out there. That could be our answer for soccer and lacrosse. Should we make Delta Park exclusively a soccer lacrosse field complex? And then take softball and baseball and move those to other parks? And maybe they all can't fit in one, but if we triangulated or, you know, connected to parks, whether it's, you know, the Normandy Park or Lynn Stadium Park, or I'll, I'll say Westmoreland, Westmoreland's Fields, there's a lot of fields there. They've had zero, they're the same fields that were built sixty years ago. But maybe we reimagine Westmoreland to be softball-baseball complex that's, I'll use the World War class, but competitive with everything else out there. And, you know, so maybe we look at turning certain parks into igniters for certain sports to really leverage as a community, not just on the weekends with these travel tournaments to drive econ, economy, but also to drive our community with better fields for our kids and adults that recreate in the, in between. So I appreciate your staff's openness to have those conversations because I think it's a big shift in thinking, like, how do we take what we have already and modify or elevate it instead of always having to find a new site and try to build something?
Thank you, Jim. Commissioner Hurst.
Thank you. Just real quickly, based on this conversation, I just wanted to be clear that the, I just wanted to put on the racket that the last time I spoke to the Diamond Project and their vision was, their vision was bigger than just a, a ball-playing opportunity. It was starting with affordable housing, which again, was the only way they got my attention because we need housing, people can afford to live in. They were talking about also building additional housing. So I, I don't want us to think of a field as just something to play sports on, but if there, my idea of a public-private partnership is that the public really does benefit from the outcomes that we, we provide. But at no time has this council actually said they were putting any public dollars into that project. Because again, it's been only conversation. So I don't want anyone to think that we're in, at the starting stages of anything that because we're not. So I, I just want to be clear about that. So, Jim, it's always a pleasure. You're always full of information. And I have to say, I really love how your brain works because just over the course of your presentation, you've thrown out so many ideas that are really thoughtful ideas about how we knit some of this work together. So again, thank you.
Thank you, colleagues. Great discussion. I do want to do a time check. We're an hour late. We have other presentations and people standing by this morning. So unless there's anything urgent, I would entertain a motion to accept the report.
So move.
And a second from Commissioner Ryan. Jim, did you want to get one more word in?
Yeah, one more word and I'll be brief. Just that we touched upon this a couple of years ago. We have a moratorium for new events in downtown Portland or in the city that use city streets. And the council four years ago, you know, it wasn't their fault. They weren't aware. It was done, I think, three councils ago. And we need to rethink this because vitality and bringing people back down to downtown Portland, we need a vibrant event community prospering in downtown Portland beyond the Blues Festival, beyond the Rose Festival, et cetera. And so like right now, if, if an opportunity came to have a rock and roll half marathon in Portland, just using that as an example, or the Rose Festival, wanting to create a half marathon, things like this, we can't do it because of a moratorium. And so, you know, to be able to, you know, think of, about that as you guys deliberate in the future and how we can do that, I think we realize that obviously city services cannot bear the cost of these things. We have to be in partner with promoters and so forth. But downtown Portland to the outside event community on an event that involves city streets is the outside world looks us as closed for business. And so we need to change this moratorium. It needs to, at least that it getting taken off the table and say, we're open for business, doesn't mean everything is going to get approved, but we're open to having conversations. So I, I just need to point that out because
Jim, let, let me just say, I will commit to that conversation with you. And there's no question that our economy is going to be disruptive for some number of years as a result of what we're seeing in COVID and just some of the trends we're seeing around urban areas. And I agree with you, we need every positive shot in the arm we can possibly get. So I'll commit to having my staff take a look at that in partnership with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Kealan, please call the roll.
Rubio. I just want to thank you again, Jim, and your team for continuing your great work of attracting these events and for standing up for sports in our city and look forward to continued conversations. I vote aye.
Ryan.
Thank you so much for being here, Jim, and good to see you as well on the Zoom room, Nathan. A great presentation. Clearly, we're all engaged. That was a lot of Q and A and dialogue. Thanks for thinking, being top of mind in some of the dialogue today. And yeah, we have, we have some next steps definitely that were given to us to partner with you and your team. So we can be a city that celebrates our sports ball endeavors. Thanks so much for being here. Do we vote aye? I got lost on what we're doing. Yeah, aye. Yes, I love this report. All right.
Hurst.
Thank you again, Jim. It's reflected in the report that you are truly a deep listener and I look forward to us continuing to be better. I vote aye.
Maps.
Like my colleagues, I want to thank Jim, Nathan and Sports Oregon for all the work that you do on behalf of the city. I think helping you succeed is a key to helping the city of Portland to succeed. And this report points to a roadmap towards success for these reasons and more. I vote aye.
Wheeler.
Well, Jim, I've always appreciated your leadership and I appreciate Sport Oregon. Of course, prior to being mayor, I served on a number of boards and one of the ones I was most proud to serve on was yours when it was called the Oregon Sports Authority. And I had a chance to work with your team and their predecessors to really understand the connection between sports and the vibrancy of our community, the health of our economy. And your report does nothing today except underscore the importance of that work, particularly right now. When, as you noted and several of my colleagues have noted, the importance of bringing activity back not only to the central city core, but also to broaden opportunities for access to sports throughout the community for people who live here. So it's not just about tourism, but it's also about the health and resilience of the community as well as our economy. So this, this is a report we always all look forward to. And once again, sir, you have delivered well. Thank you for your work. I vote aye. The report is accepted. Next item, please. Also, a report, also a very important one, item number 68.
Accept the Technology Oversight Committee Quarterly Report.
I am pleased to introduce this report by the Technology Oversight Committee, which is comprised, colleagues, as you know, of five members of the public, each of whom were selected by a commissioner. This committee is tasked with providing oversight on the city's technology-based projects. The TOC, as it's called, is currently overseeing the Integrated Tax System, a project providing a self-service e-filing system for users and the Police Office 365 project, which will migrate police email accounts to Office 365, 365. While the TOC is not overseeing the SAP Suite on Hannah Project, they are receiving periodic updates. If you don't know it, I just said, you're going to hear about it in a minute. Here to present the report are Ethan Sermo from the Office of Management and Finance, Chief Technology Officer and Director of the Bureau of Technology Services, Jeff Barrett and Jimmy Goddard, the TOC member who represents Commissioner Maps. Welcome, Ethan, Jeff and Jimmy. Thanks for being here and thanks for your patience. We know we're running a bit behind today.
No problem. Thank you very much, Mayor Wheeler. Good morning and good morning, Commissioners. One slight substitution, Jeff Barrett is unfortunately not able to make it this morning. So in his place, we will have Elise Rosenberg, the Deputy Chief Technology Officer.
We are so blessed. Thank you.
Yeah, this is the quarterly report then of the Technology Oversight Committee for quarter four of 2021. Today, you're going to be hearing from Elise Rosenberg. She's the Deputy Chief Technology Officer for the city. She's going to be presenting our report. Following that, you're going to be hearing from Jimmy Goddard. He's a representative on the committee for Commissioner Maps and he will present the committee's opinion. And that's really all I have to add. At this point, I can hand things over to Elise and she will give our full report.
Thanks so much, Ethan. Hopefully you all can hear me. I am having a little bit of connectivity challenge. So if you'll forgive me, I will stay off camera. Hopefully that doesn't diminish your confidence in your technology support in the city. Good morning, folks. I'm Elise Rosenberg. I'm the Deputy Director of the Bureau of Technology Services and I'm pleased to be here this morning to present the Technology Oversight Committee's Fourth Quarter Report for calendar year 2021. During the fourth
We just lost your sound, Elise.
Quarter, your Technology Oversight Committee, formally that was the integrated. Oh dear. Can you hear me?
You're coming in and out. We can hear you now.
Okay, great. I will try to multitask and get a phone connection here as well, just in case. Apologies. The Technology Oversight Committee oversaw two projects formally during the prior quarter, the Integrated Tax System and the Police Office 365 Implementation Project. They also heard updates from the SAP Suite on Hannah Project. And in addition, in January, the TOC reviewed the Body worn Camera RFP prior to intake and we anticipate introducing the Police Body worn Camera Project and the Police Records Management System Cloud Migration sometime in the current quarter. And I won't steal any more thunder from Jimmy Goddard, who's kindly joined us today to present on behalf of the TOC. I just want to take a moment to thank Jimmy and all of the TOC members for volunteering their time and their expertise. They make us and our projects better and we really appreciate them. Jimmy.
You're on mute, Jimmy. I know after two years, I still forget.
What about now?
There you go.
All right, awesome. So good morning. I was about to say before it's good afternoon. My name is Jimmy Goddard and member of the Oversight Committee, represents, well, representative for Commissioner Mass. So it's always, it's always a pleasure. I've always, always say to come here to present to you all the status of this project and also the joy and that we have working with our city partners. It's, it's really great. I really enjoyed. So this morning, this morning, I'm going to provide some highlights on two projects that we are overseeing. It is the Integrated Tax System and the Police Office 365. So the Integrated Tax System will deliver the self-service e-filing system. The city is implementing the natural supportive housing services taxes in Motlum County University Preschool for all types. It's been and remains so far all to date within budget, within schedule and within scope. Earlier last month, the team successfully completed the live implementation of the release three component of the system. And the, from our last review, change management activities continue to pace very well. The project is slightly below budget, which we're not complaining. And after reviewing all the evidence today, the TOC does not have any concern and we are in agreement with the quality assurance theme to begin to close out the all three go live. The second project is the Police Office 365. The project enables the police employees with the ability to collaborate with the rest of the city associated with Microsoft Office 365 or the cloud. This has just come under the TOC review and currently the team is engaging to review or to get the quality assurance vendor. The project is in discovery phase, so the focus right now is mostly on establishing the team and also conduct, conduct some what I call the investigative phase where they're trying to find lack the problems that they may encounter later and also establishing the project's overall trajectory. So far, the project is within budget, within schedule and scope. Most likely, we're going to stay on top of it as we go into the executing phase. The TOC received updates about the South Street on Hannah Project, which went live in December. But we're not overseeing this project any longer. We're going to leave it in 2021 and stay focused on 2022. We have also reviewed a request for proposal for the Portland Police Bureau Body worn Cameras Project. Expect an introduction to that project as we will begin the oversight in the next quarter. And this completes the, the TOC Oversight Report for, for the last quarter. And you know, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Jim. Very, very much appreciated. Commissioner Hurst.
Thank you, Jimmy. I appreciate that very concise report. I noticed that for the 365, the confidence level is still around medium. And so I, and you said that you're no longer going to be overseeing that project. Can you talk a little bit about what happens now? And
No. I think that was for the South Street on Hannah Project that went live on December, the Office.
Oh, okay.
It's still, it's still, they're still in the investigating phase. Now, we are very doubt and we are, we, the last minute, we asked the team very very great questions and many of us have had experience with implementing that kind of project before. So we do have some past experience and also insights that we can bring to the benefit of the team.
Excellent, excellent. My apologies then. I misheard. Yeah, we, we haven't been quite on schedule today at all. You said that you reviewed the RFP for body cams. And I know that Timmy and I are going to be meeting before it comes back to the council for a vote, but I, I'm curious if you had any opinion about what would be the best practice at actually even looking to find out what body cams we should purchase?
That's, that's an excellent question. And I believe Ethan, Ralph, Ralph was going to speak on that one. Was Ralph able to join us?
He was. I don't think he is able to speak on that right now as well. I believe he left. Elise? Do you have any response to that?
Thank you, Commissioner, for your question. Yeah, I think we had Wolf joining us earlier. He may have had to depart. So the Technology Oversight Committee did have the opportunity to review the request for proposal. We didn't receive any questions back or comments back from them. And we'll be providing an introduction to the project in the next quarter or so. Often, the projects that come before the TOC or technology projects in general start after the tool is selected. And so you have the technology implementation planning and that gives you a sense of what technology resources and types are, are are in scope. However, like the Integrated Tax System project, we knew body worn cameras was definitely going to be in scope for TOC review. So they had an introduction early and the opportunity to comment. So Jimmy, certainly interested in your professional opinion about best practices. But the, the general focus of the TOC, it would be on the technology project once we do the intake.
Yeah, I really appreciate that. I really think I would be interested in hearing what people who are experts in this field consider as best practices before this council actually starts considering policy or adopting something, right? Because I would hate to adopt something that we find out later is actually not a best practice and not going to give us the very specific information that we're looking for. So I'm really grateful to the great volunteers who actually figured this stuff out because you, you you know what you know and you're feel and you're experts in your field. And I just am very grateful that you volunteer your time because when we have you involved, we always make better decisions. So just want to thank you for being here and thank you for the update.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hurst. Colleagues, any further questions? If none, I'll entertain a motion.
So move, Mayor.
Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Hurst moves the report. I second any further discussion. Seeing none, Kealan, please call the roll.
Rubio. Thank you to Jimmy, Ethan, the TOC Committee for once again, bringing a thorough report forward and I look forward to the next one. I vote aye.
Ryan.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Ethan, Elise and Jimmy. So good to see you, Jimmy. That was an informative presentation. It was crisp and clear. I could tell we have to be determined a bit on the body worn camera details as you dive in after the purchase. I was also really happy to hear about the progress of the Integrated Tax System and that it will go live later this year. It's so crucial that the city has a solution to the integrated agencies that provide portal self-service and e-filing for users and stores for the federal taxpayer information. Anyway, I'm glad someone's diving into something that's so important and appreciated by the people who live in the, in the city. I appreciate also the Q and A from Commissioner Hurst. And I know we have more dialogue to do on that point. That said, I appreciate the report. I vote aye.
Hurst.
I can tell you, one of the best things about being on council is when the Technology Oversight Committee gives you a report that's all green. I have been here when the report was all red with maybe a little tiny bit of yellow. And so it is a fabulous day. I appreciate the report. I always appreciate the thoroughness. And, and I would be very interested if you wanted to weigh in as a committee about what you think best practices are around body cams. I'm very happy to vote aye today on this report. Thank you.
Maps.
And I too want to thank the Technology Oversight Committee for their important work. I super appreciate Ethan, Jimmy and Elise for being here today. The work that you do is incredibly important to the success of our city. Thank you so much for engaging in this work. And for these reasons and more, I vote aye.
Wheeler.
Thank you, Ethan, Jimmy, Elise for being here today and, and once again, doing a fantastic job as members of the TOC. I just want to reiterate, this is a group of Portlanders, a group of residents who share their time, their talent, their energy and their passion to make sure that the city council doesn't do anything stupid when it comes to technology projects. And I think all of us know that government doesn't always get it right when it comes to technology projects. And so I'm really grateful, colleagues, that we were able to select a team of really knowledgeable and passionate individuals who can dig deeply into some of these larger, complex technology projects and steer us down the right path. So thank you. Once again, I'm very happy to support your work and grateful for this opportunity for the public to hear what you're working on as well. I vote either reports accepted. We'll see you next time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please. We are now to the regular agenda. Item number 71, please. It is a non-emergency ordinance.
Authorize Gateway Regional Center Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Bonds.
The following ordinance will authorize the city to issue long-term bonds for projects within the Gateway Regional Center Urban Renewal Area. The bonds will fund economic development as well as affordable housing projects in the area. Today, we're joined by Matt Girock, the city's debt manager, Tony Barnes from Prosper Portland and Molly Rogers from the Portland Housing Bureau to present the ordinance. Welcome, Matt, Tony and Molly. Thanks for being here today.
Good morning, Commissioners. And thank you, Mayor Wheeler, for the introduction. And a record and Matt Girock, debt manager in the Bureau of Revenue and Financial Services under the Office of Management and Finance. As stated in the opening remarks, this authorization will allow the city to issue bonds secured by and paid solely from the tax increment revenues of the Gateway Regional Center Urban Renewal Area. Gateway Urban Renewal Area is approaching its last phase to issue debt under the area's adopted plan, which requires the city to issue any final borrowings under the plan most fiscal year. Gateway is a well-established urban renewal area with a proven track record of moderate assessed value growth, which will support the repayment of the bonds. The bonds will be issued for two primary purposes. One, we're financing 12.7 million of short-term debt and two lines of credit, both due to expire in December 2022. Second, this will provide funding for new projects under the Gateway Action Plan, including economic development and affordable housing, for which we have staff in Prosper Portland and the Portland Housing Bureau to discuss. The bond issuance is expected to not exceed 58 million, but to result in roughly 40 million in proceeds for new projects after payment of issuance costs and the current mining credit balance. The final borrowing amount of project funds available will be determined on the date of the bond sale based on interest rates at that time. The bonds will be issued as taxable bonds and the bonds will fully mature in approximately 20 years, consistent with the city's historical borrowing practices. Debt Management Commission anticipates selling the bonds in the spring of 2021. Debt Management Commission anticipates selling the bonds in spring of two thousand twenty-two by a negotiated sale. And that concludes the overview of the financing. I'm going to turn it over to the representatives of Prosper Portland and Portland Housing Bureau to write in the remarks and answer any questions on these processes.
Thank you.
Good afternoon or good morning, Mayor Wheeler and Commissioners. I'm Tony Barnes, Finance Manager, Prosper Portland. I'm joined by Elise Abwaf, Development Director of Prosper Portland. I'm happy to answer any questions regarding the proposed budgeting and resource allocation for the bonds going forward into the FY twenty-two, twenty-three requested budget and forecast. I'm joined by Molly Rogers from the Portland Housing Bureau as well. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Wheeler and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Molly Rogers. I'm the Deputy Director of the Portland Housing Bureau. We are hoping for your support to increase the indebtedness at the Gateway Urban Renewal, and we are looking forward for more affordable housing in this district. Thank you.
Thank you. That's what I call shortened to the point. Commissioner Hardesty.
Thank you. Affordable for who? What's the median family income that we can expect to come out of this affordable housing projects?
Portland Housing Bureau supports projects that are affordable to households that earn sixty percent of area median income and below. And typically, when we are putting projects together, we try to achieve deeper affordability if it's financially feasible. When we can pair our projects' capital resources with Section Eight vouchers, we can go as low as zero income. And typically, we expect those projects to serve households at thirty percent of area median income and below. We have a track record in this area of, say, the Nick Fish, which is owned by Human Solutions, that has affordable housing at sixty percent area median income and below.
Thank you, Molly. Can you tell me approximately how many units we anticipate as part of this project?
Certainly, at our current subsidy levels per unit and given how much we leverage in private resources, if current market conditions continue in terms of our leveraging rates.
Cut to the chase, please.
Okay, we anticipate somewhere between sixty and seventy.
Thank you. Thank you. That's all I needed. Appreciate that. That's all my questions, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Kealan, do we have any public testimony on this item?
No one signed up.
All right, any further business on this item? Seeing none, this is a first reading of a non-emergency ordinance. If there's a second reading, thank you both for a great presentation. Appreciate it. Thanks for your diligence. Next up is also from the regular agenda, item number seventy-two, an emergency ordinance.
Accept dispersment from TriMet of State of Oregon Statewide Transportation Improvement Funds for Portland Streetcar and authorize a sub-recipient agreement.
Commissioner Hardesty.
Thank you, Mayor. This funding exemplifies our partnership with TriMet and the state legislature to fund frequent, reliable, climate-friendly transit service. Typically, accepting a payment like this would have been on the consent agenda. But today's action also gives me an opportunity to say a few words about the related topic, a potential streetcar extension into Montgomery Park in northwest Portland. Earlier this month, the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability and Portland Bureau of Transportation Leadership released for public comment a discussion draft on the Montgomery Park Transit and Land Use Development Strategy. It can be found on BPS's website, and I'm sorry, it can be found on the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability's website, and I urge the public to check it out and provide feedback. In short, this effort would redesignate about thirty acres of industrial land for a new mixed-use development neighborhood and would serve that area with a short streetcar extension. Commissioner Rubio and I have been briefed by our respective bureau staff, and I have made it crystal clear that my support for the plan is contingent on equitable development. We can continue to do things the way we've always done them before, and this project can be a new model on how we can bring public benefit to those who've been left behind in previous redevelopment efforts. It's early in the process, and there's a lot more to discuss, of discussion to come. But right now, I just want to make sure this council, our development partners, and the broader community know that highly affordable housing is central to this project and will be a major driver towards gaining my support for moving forward on this extension. I, that concludes my remarks. And I believe we have a staff here that will answer questions on this, on this item seventy-two.
Thank you, Commissioner Hardesty. Anybody have any questions for staff? Kealan, do we have public testimony on this item?
No one signed up.
Please call the roll.
Rubio.
Thank you, Commissioner Hardesty, for bringing this forward. I vote I.
Ryan.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Hardesty, for bringing this forward. I am excited about visioning what that development will do for our city. It's exciting. It's important for us to keep dreaming and dream big. And I'm all in for this infrastructure of getting the streetcar further into northwest Portland. I vote I.
Hardesty.
Thank you so much, Rich and Catherine. And again, this is really about increasing our housing stock for folks at sixty percent and below median family income. We will continue to discuss expanding the streetcar, but my priority is getting people into housing they can afford to live in. And so I'm very happy to vote I, and I'm very happy to continue the conversation.
Maps.
Hi.
Wheeler.
Your ordinance is adopted. Item seventy-three, please, also an emergency ordinance.
Mayor, we're pulling seventy-three back to my office. We apologize. There's a quick fix that we have to make, and we plan to bring it back next week.
Without objection. Kealan, that completes our business for this morning. Is that correct?
Actually, Mayor, I need to read the title into the record and then.
Yeah, you do. Sure. Go ahead.
Thank you. Reassign operation and management of Southwest Main Street right of way between Southwest Nato Parkway and Southwest First Avenue to the Bureau of Transportation and authorize a reduced lease rate to Motnum County for a ten-year period.
Very good. Return to Commissioner Hardesty's office without objection. That now completes our agenda, correct?
It does. Thank you.
Thank you, Kealan. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you, everybody who testified today. Thank you to our great city staffers and community members who stepped up to testify today. Appreciate it. We are adjourned.